Mark, we up? We are up? All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. It's 10:02. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags.
My most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to come here and take care of the community business. We thank you for everything that you have given us. We ask you that we take care of this business in a righteous way, have understanding and patience with each other. We ask you to continue blessing the health care workers, the first responders, also our military and our governed. Christ's name, we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioners Hutchins, Stray, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from January 11th, 2021, regular session. Entertained motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on future agendas or addressed by some other course of response. Is anyone here wishes to address the court today? Daniel, is anybody online yet? For those that may be viewing online, you can go to huntcounty.net and to the comments banner, and you can put in a comment, be read to the court, or put a phone number, and we'll call you back at the appropriate time. Being done, move on to old business. Action item one and two, we're delaying it again. Is that correct, Daniel?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess we'll just strike those and have to redo them. Yeah, we'll have to reschedule under old business next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, you have the consent calendar in front of you. Item number one is to be, we need to strike it. Any other comments on any two through six? If not, I entertain a motion for the approval of the consent calendar items two through six.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action items, approval of accounts payable?
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item one, we're going to postpone until after executive session. Number two, quarterly report for the Audie Murphy American Cotton Museum. Susan?
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for letting me present our quarterly report for everyone. During the past three months, visitors to the museum came from 38 different states. Internationally, we actually had a few this past quarter. They came from England, Germany, Mexico, and Canada. There was a total of 951 paid visitors to the museum and a total of 1,181 people actually signed our guestbook. Our visitors spent 42 nights in local hotels, which included Comfort Suites, Holiday Inn, Best Western, Motel Six, Quality Inn, Super Eight, and Hampton Inn. We did have a few group tours. One came from the Audie Murphy Club out of Dallas. They've started coming again. And the Willow Root Homeschool Group and also the Dodd City Second Grade Class came out. Our lunch break special speakers for the quarter included, in October, Laura Ergang talked about her artistic career. In November, Dr. Shannon Kowalski did a presentation on the Russian Revolution. And in December, Dr. Keith McFarland spoke about the Pearl Harbor attack, which was extremely well attended. We had almost 50 people there. So that was wonderful for one of our lunch break specials. In October, the museum had its first goofy golf tournament. Don't know if y'all knew about that. It was a lot of fun. We set up a homemade miniature golf course out at the museum and had a lot of fun. So we're looking forward to doing it again this year. So y'all need to come out and do it as well. In November, we had about 150 people attend our annual Frontier Day, playing games, learning archery, making butter, and watching blacksmith demonstrations for just a few of the activities that the kids were able to do. We also held the Cotton and Roll History Conference and did a special paper brick dedication with the Military Officers Association. For our movie nights, we showed Saddle Mountain Roundup starring Ray Corrigan, John King, and Max Tarhune, and Gunsmoke starring Audie Murphy. We also partnered with the Public History Class at Texas A&amp;M University over in Commerce, where they curated a temporary exhibit that was put on display at the museum about the university and World War II. And they did an amazing job, especially considering they had never done this before. So it was something brand new, and I think they really enjoyed it. That's about all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any comments? Thank you, Susan. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval of the quarterly report?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, the quarterly report for the Hunt County Volunteer Fire Department. Ryan Biggers?
Morning Commissioners and Judge. I gave you all an additional pages to add to that report I presented last meeting based on some additional reports that were sent in just after that second Tuesday. Kind of our first report with you all with the new contract. Would love to have any insight, recommendations, or things y'all would like to see added or taken away from this report. Within the report, we'll have the call volume breakdown of the departments. I have included all departments' reports as submitted and broke them down by month and in the order on alphabetical order through times. Throughout that quarter, you see we broke down about 67% of the response throughout the county was EMS, with another 8% being, or 6% of 8% being MBAs, 7% structure fires, six brush fires. Then we had small vehicle fires and fire alarm investigations and public assists. We had a, for 2021, it was a lesser year on our wildfires throughout the county. We didn't, during the freeze and everything, we didn't have as active as a wildfire year as we have in the past, luckily. But we are seeing that pick up here into the winter and the fall now with our dying fuels, even though we're getting rain. What our problem is, is that we have, the freezing temperatures have killed all the grass. So we have a wet, saturated ground, dead fuels above hand. So we're seeing that pick up coming into this year. Some notable things for 2021 that the departments would like to share. Wolf City Fire Department, North Hunt County, made 100% of their call volume answered by their department. Campbell and several many other departments throughout the county saw a significant increase of around 23% within the call volume from 2020 to 2021. And along with the, this court's commitment in its raise in October for the additional fire departments, many fire departments will be able to take financial security and upgrade equipment and apparatus. And for that, we're very grateful for the actions y'all took in giving us the additional funding, and those departments are putting that right to work right on the streets of Hunt County, and we're very happy to see that. Campbell, along with CASH, Merit, and several other departments have worked in the process of adding new apparatus to their fleet and growing their equipment base. That is all I have for y'all this evening. With any input that y'all would like to give, I'd like to make the changes if needed.
Anybody got a question?
No, I will say, I like this report, Chief. This looks good.
Thank you.
Good job, Ryan.
Would it be okay, Judge, if I can request, and this may be something different for a different day, if I can move this report to the fourth, the second meeting? Our contract does say the second Tuesday of the month at the end of the quarter. Would it be okay if I presented on this meeting at the end of the quarter, the second Tuesday?
It's fine with me. It's a job.
It just gives me a little more time. Sometimes we've got some stragglings in the report call numbers and stuff like that. I can make sure.
No problem.
I would like to say this. I think it's a good report. I would like to, everybody gets it in. I believe that's what we're going to need from now on in the future. Everybody turn these reports in, according to the contracts that exist.
Right, yeah. And then we, so we did, with the additions I had, there was everyone's reports. They ended up being in here. It was just that that first Tuesday, whereas a few stragglers, so we may work.
We probably were a little greedy on getting there too quick after the end of a quarter, having to have a report in just a few days.
Yeah, it's hard, you know. It makes it difficult, but we're getting there. And then we have reminded all departments of their financial and membership reports due to all by this evening, so.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Judge.
Yeah, Chief. Thank you, Chief. And I'd like to also thank and commend the Wolf City Fire Department for that call response rate.
That's a big accomplishment, 100% answered by their department is huge. You know, example, CASH, we have, we had a staffing for 100% throughout the year. Station state staff 100% of the time throughout the year 2021. But still, with the call volume, we were unable to necessarily mitigate every single call. We had to aid out some of our calls because we were busy on others. Wolf City was able to make 100% of their calls 100% of the time with 100% Wolf City Fire Department address. That's a huge, that's a huge accomplishment. Fantastic job.
Appreciate it, Chief. Entertained motion for approval of the quarterly reports, Hunt County Volunteer Fire Department?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item four, the quarterly report for the Northeast Texas Children's Museum. Charlene? Exciting things going on at the museum.
Always, always. Good morning. Our year ended very well. We ended up with 25,984 visitors for the year, and considering all the ups and downs with COVID, we were very pleased with that. That's only 20 short of 26,000. And they came from 254 different communities and cities in our area. In October, I think at the spooky night at the museum, we had almost 400 in attendance. And in November, we did our STEM program with third grade. This is a science program that we do. We set up different stations, different classrooms, and those schools come and rotate through those. In December, we had one of our most popular events for the year, and that is brunch with Santa. And for brunch with Santa, we had 348 attending. 25 of those were volunteers. And they came from 23 different cities to brunch with Santa. Commerce Little Angels does a pancake breakfast with that. We have crafts. We have play at the museum and pictures with Santa. As we begin January, we are beginning our 20th year for the Northeast Texas Children's Museum. So we are looking forward to many events to commemorate this event. We think it's pretty exciting that we have been around now for 20 years. One of the things that we are doing currently is taking the Mega Lung, which is sponsored by the Hunt Regional Health Care, to schools in Hunt County. And if you have not seen the lung, it's eight feet tall, 13 feet wide, and it shows all the diseases someone can get with their lungs. With COVID right now, we find that the children listen even more attentively because we can really emphasize to them the importance of having healthy lungs to be able to combat all the different things their lungs are exposed to now. So that is something, in fact, this morning, where the lung is visiting Campbell. We are getting ready for the Daddy Daughter Dance on February 5th. Our theme this year is over the moon because we think dads are over the moon about their daughter, and we're over the moon that we're in 20 years. So we're trying something a little different for the dads who aren't too into dancing, period, and are with their daughters. We are having an activity area where the dads and daughters can do a competition. They're going to have a moon rock throw. They're going to shoot the moon, and they're going to have an asteroid throw. And they have little cards where they can keep up with who is winning for each of those events. We're also getting ready for our fifth grade weird science program, which is sponsored by Farmer Selectic. Our most exciting news is that we have just received a grant from State Farm for a fire safety house. This will be an outdoor. It'll look like a playhouse, but it'll have windows down low to show children to get down low in case of a fire. And on a more personal note with this, the two girls who were just killed in Silver Springs in a fire had scheduled a birthday party Saturday at the museum. So this really makes fire safety in homes even more important to us and I'm sure to you. So thank you for your support in letting us do all the things we do for the children in Northeast Texas.
Thank you, Charlene. If anyone hasn't been there, you need to get to Commerce and look at this. It's pretty amazing what they do.
And it's continually growing.
Yes. Charlene does a fantastic job, and the community of Commerce does a fantastic job with it. Congratulations on 20 years. That's amazing. Entertained motion for approval of quarterly report in Northeast Texas Children's Museum?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number five, the Hunt Regional Hospital requesting county's American Rescue Plan funding. Lee?
Good morning, Judge Stovall. Commissioners, thank you for your time this morning. For those who don't know me, I'm Lee Bowles, new CEO at the hospital since the retirement of Mr. Carter back at the end of the year, longtime CEO. I have Reese Hurley here with me, who is our chief nursing officer, just in case we get into clinical questions. Because those of you that don't know me, I've been a CFO for over 30 years in a hospital, so I still reserve the right to ask a crazy question on clinical matters every now and then. Just to update you on where we are and why we're here today, we presented to you back at the, I think it was the last meeting you had in October, an updated request on where we were with the Delta variant for our numbers through August and September. I'm not sure y'all won't pull those slides up. But we had provided you some information, and I think that hopefully you've got the handout in front of you. If not, do you have that? We had had 361 patients admitted who were either directly related to COVID or had a COVID comorbidity through September 30th during that August and September surge. And they were very sick from that Delta variant, if you remember. So they were staying an extremely long period of time, an average length of stay of almost nine, nine days, which is well over twice what the normal is. And we had spent $88,400,000 in direct cost of taking care of those patients back through September 30th. And that provided you some information where we had been paid $5.6 million on taking care of those patients. And when you initially received your funding from the American Rescue Act, you initially gave us $1 million toward that request. So that left us with a deficit that we came back and asked you for through September of So that's kind of a refresher on what we asked for last October. Since that time, since October 1st and through Sunday, just kind of give you an update on where things are with COVID. Kind of a mixture of what we have been seeing, still some of folks carrying over from the Delta variant, but much more of the Omnicrom. We've had 527 more admissions since October 1st. The good news is they're staying a lot shorter stay. They're only averaging about 6.8 days. That's about two point days, two days less than what they were staying with the Delta variant. But that represents 3,615 patient days. And I know you don't know a lot about what's going on at the hospital, but we're full. All our beds are full with just normal business anymore. So all this surge in COVID patient volumes puts an extreme burden on the system right now because we're having to manage that way outside our normal channels of patient care. So this is, and this has caused us to incur another almost $7.8 million in expenses since then related directly to that patient care. We're expecting about $4 million in payments, so we've got another $3.7 million in deficit in taking care of these patients. You ask, why has that grown? Quite honestly, we're having to manage these patients with travel nurses and agency nurses, and so is every hospital in the country right now. And that demand for those folks has driven the cost to double what it was back in August and September. We have 50 nurses right now in-house that we're paying for ourselves outside of our normal salary budget, and we're paying about $170 an hour for those travel nurses, which actually is a pretty good deal, if you can believe that, compared to what a lot of hospitals are having to pay for agency nurses. So that's creating a pretty large deficit. Yes, we're getting paid for managing those extra patients, but we're having to do it with an extremely high labor cost. So it's creating an operational strain on us. The state did provide us 27 more FTEs back toward the second Monday of the month of January. That was certainly good news. But you've got to remember, in the throes of Delta back in August, September, we had 60 probably nurses in the hospital and respiratory therapists provided for from the state. So we've got kind of a weird mix right now of what's going on. We got less help from the state. We have a very expensive labor pool of folks that we're hiring with travel. Plus, we're averaging, until today, we were averaging about 115 employees out of work every day. So every morning is a management fire drill, trying to figure out how we're going to keep operations covered and the doors open. The other little thing that I wanted to mention that's probably at the bottom of your report there, item 11, we have done 20,291 COVID tests since October 1st. We had done 9,000 through Sunday, just in January alone. Yes, we get paid for doing those tests. We get paid $100 for doing those COVID tests, but we spend more than that every test doing those tests because we're having to, we outsource those to labs outside of the hospital. The hospital has capacity to do these tests, about 12 tests every two hours. But the reagents that we have to be able to do those in-house ran out a long time ago and due to supply chain challenges. So we're paid to have that testing done outside the hospital's door. So it's basically a wash, and this is a CFO talking again, that we actually tie up about $100 for six to nine months, arguing with insurance companies, trying to get paid. We eventually will get paid, but it's an all-out, hand-to-hand combat, just getting your money with those guys. So we have about $2 million of cash tied up in accounts receivable right now as we've paid for these tests and waited to get reimbursed from the insurance company. So the story's a little different. The narrative's changed a little bit, what we're dealing with right now, but we continue to struggle with those. I've got an eye chart in here, and I really only put it in here for reference purposes for you guys. This is information that is publicly available on a hospital's website. This is a page like this. And what this is talking about is those patients have a DRG associated with them, and they fall into these groups. And you can see the majority of them fall into a respiratory infection, DRG. And if you'll go on our website, it is publicly available information due to price and transparency that the Trump administration put in place, that we have to publicly display what we get paid from every payer. So our low that we get paid is around $5,700, which is a typical Medicaid patient. And the most that we get paid is from our, one of our better commercial plans is around $21,000. And we all know that the hospital's about 60% governmental payers and about 15% uninsured. So there's about a 30% group there that has some coverage. So you hear a lot of stories about hospitals getting paid $100,000 on every one of these patients. That is a particular patient type where you get into that, the patient that needs an ECMO service, which is a very labor-intensive service where basically, what, Reese, they get two or three nurses of care round the clock. So yes, you may get paid $100,000, but you're spending $10,000 a day on the cost of their nursing care. And it probably, in our particular case, they've averaged staying 24 days at the hospital. And we don't even really provide that type of care. It's just in the crisis that we're in. Those patients need a special higher level acuity, and I think we flew one out this morning on the helicopter. So they leave ours hospital as quick as possible, and then we split that DRG with whoever they go. But, so, all that being said, we're averaging about $12,000 or $13,000 on each one of these patients that we're taking care of. And when you're spending the type of money that we're spending on the cost of their labor, it's creating a continuation of a financial struggle for the hospital. I have just in the package a little bit of information on our finances through December. We have generated a lot of extra income from this volume, but it has generated a lot of additional, two negative things, bad debts and a lot of additional expense to take care of those patients. So you'll see the income statement where we have incrementally generated almost $25 million more in patient charges than what we had budgeted through three months, which is great, but that's not real money. That's charges. That means nothing. We get paid a contracted rate with all our payers. So you see that second set of numbers down there where there's a $23 million variance in contractual adjustments and bad debt, basically eating into all that incremental income. And then on the second page is expenses, and you can see there a big variance from the budget, and it's all, it's a $4 million variance through three months of paying for contract labor. So that's really what's going on at the hospital. Yes, we're busy. Yes, we're generating revenue. Yes, we're getting paid, but it is very expensive care that we're providing. The hospital is full. We have grown just our normal patient surgery volumes and medical surgical patient care, deliveries, our rehab. All our beds are full. So as we get into these surges, we're managing in non-traditional areas of the hospital. The good news is some of the other graphs that I've included, I don't even know what page it's on, and we haven't got it up. The region is starting to see those ER admissions go down. There's probably an eight- or nine-day trend now, ER admission, daily visits going down. We were seeing in the depths of this probably an extra 100 to 120 ER visits every day when the crisis is at its peak. Yesterday, we had 180 ER visits. That's our normal. That is our normal between our three sites that we manage. So as that starts to come down, you'll see the hospital utilization start to trend down over the next couple of weeks. That's sort of my point from all that. And there's a couple of other graphs in here from the district that kind of reflect that, the declining ER visits throughout our 19-county region. You'll see a chart in here that shows my hospital at 100% occupancy, and it'll show this particular chart that I included from the 23rd shows that we have an ICU census of 21. It's actually 24 patients this morning. We only have 16 beds. So 50% of our ICU is at double occupancy, which is, creates all kinds of operational distress and things that we have to do to manage that much differently from our norm. So the district is really getting ready to go through a big conversation about how we're going to grow and how we're going to provide the beds that we need to accommodate our normal business that we're seeing, much less these COVID surges that we continue to have to face. The very last page in there just really reflects the fact that Hunt County and our one hospital is in a staffing crisis mode, and that's really what that chart is showing with the 19 counties in the region and the number of hospitals that are kind of in the same boat that we are. Glad to take any questions. I know it's a lot of information, but basically, important part is updating you on the first page of our request from back at the end of October, I think it was, for the $1,833 that we asked for that helped us through our September 30th physical year. But just rest assured, we're still in the same boat that we were in then.
May I ask something?
Yes, sir.
In reference to patients, as far as, did you say 15% really? You just had to write it off?
Well, in normal times, the hospital has 14 or 15% of our patients are uninsured patients. That's correct. That's why you see that on that page where you see a summary of our income, you see bad debts. That's the uninsured patients that we take care of. And yes, we do get some tax funding for that to help us with our uninsured care. But in the seven years I've been here, my first year here, that deficit from the tax funding for the uninsured cost of the patient's care that we provided was about $3.5 million. As we've grown, that gap has grown every year. Till last year, it was like an $11 million gap between the cost of the care and the uninsured tax support that we receive. So still a big gap. As we grow, that's good, but that gap continues to grow.
Also, in reference to Medicare and Medicaid, what percent actually do they pay of what's actually supposed to be?
Medicare, I go through every year and do a Medicare cost report. Medicare, their general formula is, they don't want you making money on providing Medicare patients care, but they want to pay you the cost. Medicare, their general formula is, they don't want you making money on providing Medicare patients' care, but they want to pay you the cost of taking care of those patients. So we do a cost report, it's kind of like our tax return, and we try to get it pretty doggone close to a hundred percent of the cost. I'm not talking about all the funny charges that you see. If we spend five thousand dollars on taking care of a patient, you know, we try to, Medicare will adjust things to the point that they're trying to pay you around five thousand dollars. It's the kind of the way the mechanics of it works, you kind of break even on Medicare. Medicaid is about half of what Medicare is in the state of Texas. Now, one of the other little things going on in our financial situation, you guys probably hear about it being part of the government the way you are, is we are very dependent on the Medicaid waiver funding. And there's a piece of that waiver funding that is a rate enhancement program for Medicaid patients that is turned off right now. It got turned off September first, and that's costing us about four million dollars a year. It's just a casualty of the debate going on between Austin and Washington right now. So it affects the district drastically that that Medicaid U-RIP program funding, that is what it's called, has gone away. So that's hurting us financially every month on our income statement, too.
I appreciate the fact that you advised us that FEMA was paying part of the labor that was being out. But if I'm not mistaken, there was sixty of them that y'all had hired in that were paying, that's where?
We have fifty right now that we're employing, that are on our contract. There, we have, it's almost a million eight a month that we're spending for those fifty employees. The rate keeps escalating because of the man, the demand nationally for those folks. Now, the state has provided twenty-seven employees, nurses and respiratory therapists, and I'm not sure how much longer they're going to be here, Reese, do you know? They've, it's still open-ended, you know. I think the governor's extended this crisis through mid-March or so, so it's probably a pretty good likelihood they'll be around at least that long.
The money that you talked in reference to, you know, hiring these extra people coming in from all over the state, California, I think it was twenty-five or something. How much was the cost, basically? I know that you'd been trying to get a lot of the healthcare workers to, you know, come, you know, take the place because they didn't have it. What percent, or how much money was spent on basically healthcare workers staying there and working overtime?
Well, it's kind of a couple of things, Barry. The direct cost of those agency people is about one point seven to one point eight million dollars a month. That's unbudgeted cost to us. There's a little bit of hidden things in our salaries where we have had to make significant early marketed adjustments to keep our staff working for us and not take advantage of these travel opportunities, or take advantage of opportunities to travel forty miles down the road for an increase in their average hourly rate. So we've done some things operationally that are really kind of hidden in our finances, just to try to adjust and keep our staffing as whole as possible. So that's a little bit extra that goes on.
I know in the past, and this was prior to the last meeting, I believe it was December, in fact, you had to close the emergency room down, basically over in Perrin. You've got them back up, they moved everybody over to the facility over here in Greenville. I understand that at one point there was a loss there of two million, and also Quinlan, but what's going on with that right now?
Well, it's just sort of a common thing of healthcare finance, emergency rooms by their very nature. If you evaluate what we spend on nursing care and the cost of equipment and helping physicians with subsidies and things, even, all ERs probably everywhere lose money. But those ERs generate inpatients that help your bottom line, they generate surgeries, they generate work after their discharge for lab tests and imaging services, and all those things we make money on. So even though Commerce and Quinlan, if you look at the bricks and mortar themselves and the patients that walk in, they struggle a little bit financially, but what they do globally for the district to keep the patients coming and keeping our hospital beds full, you know, they more than generate a return for us. Commerce, since it's reopened, before, we had shut down with initial stages of two years ago with the early onset, trying to understand how things were going to happen. We didn't know we were going to get CARES Act funding or American Rescue Act funding, that was unknown to us at the time. So we made some adjustments operationally and shut down some services. Since Commerce has reopened, their volumes are probably up fifteen patients a day from what they were before the shutdown. So Commerce has kind of flipped a little bit and has come on strong in growth in their volumes, which is really encouraging to me. Not necessarily just the CEO, but the old CFO in me, too. So it's, and quite honestly, our ER at Greenville can't handle the taking on the, any of those either two sites, additional incremental volumes showing up in that ER here at Greenville. We just kind of add capacity here. So keeping those sites open and seeing patients is utmost critical any longer.
But Commerce was losing money pre-COVID.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Commerce, Commerce was, yeah, that was kind of the known model that it was. But they send over three to five admissions every day to the hospital, keeping the hospital full. So that's the positive side that really doesn't show up when you look at a bottom-line performance of a building itself, so.
We went, we go on the one versus we don't have one, I mean, it's crazy.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lee. Commissioners, y'all want to take some action there, you want to talk about it in executive session and come back out, what's your pleasure?
Let's talk in executive session, come back out.
Is that all right?
That'd be good.
Okay. We'll take action on it after executive session. Action item number six, the request to fund Twin Rovers Mission Program Equine Assisted Therapy. They did a presentation, as y'all remembered last time, commissioners. They had requested, I think, fifteen thousand dollars in funding to have this program, for those that weren't here, that they're starting an equine therapy for our veterans out at the new facility on I-30 next to the, what's the hospital? Glen Oaks, they're out beside Glen Oaks. And, you know, of course, I think I said it at the other meeting, my wife is a crazy horse person, and she'd rather ride a horse than eat, I think. But she, she knows about, you know, this therapy, as well as, we have a gentleman in Quinlan that did the horse therapy, what's his name, Philip?
Larry Pereira.
Larry Pereira, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, they're very highly involved in it in their careers. And I think it's a worthwhile effort on the part of these people to try to help our veterans. And I'd make the suggestion that we approve funding five thousand of it for now, and let them, help them get up and going and see what kind of outreach they can get, how many patients they can start serving, and if we can, if we need to fund them some more later, but that'll give them a chance to get started. So I'd make the motion, we donate, we set up funding of five thousand dollars for the funding of this and move the five thousand out of contingency into, I guess Bruce helped the line item, are we going to do it a general?
If you're going to use a general fund and being the thirty-three hundred.
Thirty-three hundred. Y'all have to create a line item, I guess.
We'd have to set up a new line item, correct, Stacy?
Okay, so the motion is that we'll move five thousand from contingency to a line item in general fund, general administration? And is that the correct place?
Well, it would be.
Thirty-three hundred?
Yeah, it'd be the one where we, like, we make payments to the museum.
Public service, okay, there you go, thank you, public service.
I'd like to say this, though, also Larry Pereira, he's not doing that anymore, and this will be the only one in Hunt County. There are others that would like to, but this is the only one that's available in Hunt County at this point.
So did you make a motion, Judge?
I made a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Number, action item seven, a public hearing and possible take action on adopting the Lake Tewocany Comprehensive Plan, Daniel Harrison.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, I have a quick presentation here to show you where we are on the Lake Comprehensive Plan. What I want to do real quick is we'll just do a quick overview, and then I want to tell you what the final recommendations and the edits were from the plan from the last time that we met you. Of course, the people involved, of course, is the court as adopting the plan. We also have the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission, they have made a recommendation to you to adopt the plan, and then, of course, Freeze Nichols is the consulting team that you have.
Daniel, can we, can we tell the public what this covers? It's the, the, with the state gave us the authority, gave Hunt County the authority even back in the eighties, I think it was, to have zoning within five thousand feet of the take line of Lake Tewocany, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
So that's the only area we're talking, that's the area we're talking about, it's within five thousand feet of Lake Tewocany. I just make sure the public understood this, so they didn't think we're doing a whole county or something.
No, correct, we are just doing five thousand feet around the shoreline of the lake. So of course, there is Hunt County itself, and then when we're looking at the commissioner precincts, and so you could see Lake Tewocany there. You could see that five thousand-foot buffer that goes around the lake, and of course, our two commissioner precincts, Strayton and Martin, who would be in that area. Just the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission, that's the group that makes recommendations to the court. That's, state law also sets up the organization for the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission. So a little bit about what we're here to do is to have a public hearing and think about adoption. A little bit about the project, it's really two phases, because we currently have zoning around Lake Tewocany. And so the first part of this project is to develop the plan, look at the land uses, what's the vision? We've asked people what they'd like to see developed around the lake, and then we will update the regulations to be in agreement with the plan. We've gone through a process where we've had open houses, met with stakeholders, different type of people to really get the input needed to draft the plan. And of course, we're on the, on the last stages of the first phase, which is the plan adoption. We've had some open houses, and I'll highlight those here in just a minute. Our most recent one was here in December. We've had a project website active, so if people didn't want to come out to the meetings and still download the meeting materials, of course, they could download the plan and all the information right there. We've had about six thousand total visits, about twelve, thirteen hundred unique users, so some of those people are coming back to download information. We do have a quote here that really talks about planning, destiny is not a matter of chance, it's a matter of choice. So we get to ask the people in the area what they want their area to become and how those regulations should be shaped. And of course, that plan will help us guide the lake zoning regulations, other type of infrastructure, road planning, those different type of elements. So the plan is really a ten-to-twenty-year vision of how we see the lake area developing. It is not the actual zoning regulations or what is permitted by the county, that is what we are getting to in the second phase. So why are we planning? Of course, you can sort of see on this slide, back in, back in two thousand, our region was about five point one million people. In 2020, we were at seven point two, but by 2045, we're expected to add another three and a half million people to our regions. So we have a lot of growth as Tewocany has grown over the years, we've seen people move and develop land in that area, so that is expected to continue. Once again, as the judge should mention, the state sets up in the local government code how counties can administer zoning. It's not as common to have county zoning as we have zoning typically inside cities. But the state is authorized in these areas surrounding lakes to provide coordinated development. Concerns about water quality, overdevelopment around the lake, these are all important issues to manage. And of course, if, you know, these things aren't managed, sometimes lake water quality for drinking water purposes, that can be impacted, also having undue concentration of density. And so it's a great management tool to manage this great resource that we have, and so it is time to update, update the zoning. So looking real quick at the draft, once again, there's our planning area around the lake. We have five chapters, just touching on those real quick. The introduction chapter is about facts and figures around the lake, we look at population, what the existing land uses currently are, how the lake got established. So just the facts and figures that people would want to know that are interesting around the lake. And we have an existing land use map, so people can see how the land is currently being used that surrounds that lake, and so a lot of it's residential. We do have, of course, some commercial, so different facts and figures that really show that. Then we move into visioning, and so we've asked people what they'd like to see around the lake. So we, once again, we've worked with the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission, we've worked with stakeholders, we've also worked with the public to have those, those ideas brought forth. Here's just a couple of different meetings that we've had, and, you know, sort of the feedbacks, we're asking people, you know, what are the, what do you see as developing this lake? What is important to you? You live here, so what do you need around the lake? What do you want to try to, you know, see and also not see around the lake? So we've had different meetings, different stakeholders, we talked to the Sabine River Authority, the manager, owner of the land under the lake. Open houses, we met in Quinlan at Butler Intermediate School, and so we had pretty well-attended open houses. Here's just a few of the photos from that. Like I said, our last one was in December, so right before Christmas. And so we have a vision statement for the lake, a place where residents are proud to live and that people are excited to visit, because they wanted to focus on, we're really proud to live out here, and we want to increase that, and also, we want to bring out people to be able to shop and to provide employment opportunities and elements like that. So the mission statement, that's sort of how we're going to go about achieving that vision, providing quality neighborhoods and businesses for lake area residents and developing lake recreation tourism with desirable lodging option in vibrant destinations. So we get into the future land use chapter, which is a very critical part, where we see the area around the lake and how those uses are going to develop. So we have a future land use map that shows where the low-density residential is, where's the medium-density residential, commercial, mixed-use type of development could occur, which that could be a little bit higher density in there. And so we can come back to these maps, but here's just the north side of the lake and the south side of the lake. And so those, those colors that you see on the map, those translate into these land use categories, and of course, you know, our one-acre development, so something along those lines, having something a little bit denser for the medium-style development. When we move it into the commercial, you know, trying to capture what that would look like and be. Some of the more just straight commercial that we'd have, when we have, you know, just our regular businesses. Then, of course, Sabine River Authority property, and that's really for flood, floodplain management and mitigation, those type of, type of resources. So the plan, once again, is a guide, and so we have some information in there about how that translates into the current zoning districts, but once again, we'll be getting into that. There's currently about twelve thousand people living in the lake area. Once all that land would be fully developed, what would that look like? That could be up to fifty-seven thousand people around the lake. Now, that's a high number, but when we look at how quickly that can happen, that, that would be way off into the future. That's assuming that every parcel of land develops, which, which it takes a long time to actually reach that. But we have a couple of growth rate scenarios in there, so we can sort of see, you know, here by 2045, you know, whether it's two thousand, are we growing by two thousand people or ten thousand people, is really what we're trying to take a look at when we look at, you know, till 2020, 2045. Other recommendations about how, you know, design of neighborhoods, things like that, that as these areas are, roads are taken over by the county or dedicated to the county or a city, you know, what elements do we see in there? Just some more design features that we have in there, trying to make, make things look nice, be organized. So these were a lot of the comments and the feedback that we had about having quality, quality neighborhoods. RV parks, that's something that we'll get into a little bit more when we get into, into the zoning, but that's a critical issue that we, so we have some recommendations to address those. Other things like stormwater management, how do we design parking lots? We want to make sure that we're managing stormwater, things like that, so we're not affecting our neighbors when these things come in. The thoroughfare plan, you have the recently adopted thoroughfare plan, so the future land use plan meshes with your recently adopted thoroughfare plan network, so we have that on there. And then an implementation plan where we just really summarize all the recommendations in the plan, and how to administer the plan really being that guide. And it's a flexible guide that can be updated in the future. But some of the critical things is, you know, how do we administer enforcement's an issue in the, in the area? Because a lot of people don't know that we have county zoning once we're in that five thousand feet. So there's some, some recommendations that we have to address that about education and enforcement. Also, different recommendations for looking at permit fees to help fund the process and the administration of the zoning. And letting people know that there's ideas such as, you know, signs to let people know that they are in the Lake Tewocany planning area, so they know to check with the county to get a permit rather than, you know, having to find out later that. to get a permit rather than, you know, having to find out later that there's regulations there. And of course, in the appendix, we document all the public input that we've heard, so you could see the survey results, you could see the boards that we've had, scan those, put those all in the back. So on December 2nd, when we had the open house, I just want to let you know the, the key takeaways that we had at that meeting, so what were people saying? We had, like I said, pretty well attended meeting at Butler Intermediate. Number one, there was concern about too much development, just having development in the region, not wanting to see development, concern about public infrastructure, some clarity on the density of what medium density meant, and I have a slide for each one of these here in just a second. There's some, some frustration with meeting notifications, which we have a recommendation to address, how development works and who develops property, there was some education, some clarity that was needed for that. Zoning enforcement, HOA enforcement, and collaboration between the cities and the county. So number one, people were saying, you know, they don't like to see farmland turned into development, there's concern about the overall population just seeing, seeing too much development. So a couple of map edits that we made, we had this area on the northeast side, that was seen as commercial, switched that to low density, we had some mixed use density, we, we went less on that, we had some medium density that you'll see here on the map. All this sort of drove down the population numbers slightly, and so we also had a discussion about how to change when we had our mixed use density, making sure that only 25% of that would be for like higher density apartment or something, something like that. So, so put in some limits on that was one way to, to address that concern. So we added text into not only map edits, but we added text edits to, to really address that, that first comment. Second comment people had was really questions about public infrastructure, such as how do roads work and how are they funded and maintained, and so we talked a lot about, it's really the developer who installs roads, and then they dedicate those either to the county or to the city, and just how that process works. So we've added some language, so that's just really informational and educational to the plan, so people understand how roads are, are built and planned. Number three, when, during the presentation, people were sort of unclear about what medium density meant, so basically you're, you're thinking two categories, one acre lots and above, and then something that's below one acre. So that was just a little bit of clarity that we had. And also, when we're talking about zoning and getting the information out, people were just sort of confused about how, you know, they got the information, because we did a, what it pushed with, with reaching out to the neighborhood associations, homeowner associations, posting it on different websites. So one of the things that we have as a possible action and that we have recommended is, you know, dedicating a website so people could see the calendar and the schedule when the Lake Tewocne Planning Commission's meeting, can have some other information to let people know, and also posting a link to that on the county's homepage under, under the quick links. So just a, just a text to clarify that. Number five, how development works in general too, because once again, there was a lot of just people trying to find out information about how development works, and there was some questions about like, why is the county wanting to, to develop this residential subdivision? We did explain that it's not the county or a city that's really developing this land or farmland, it's a private owner who sells the land or wants to develop their land. And so what the zoning regulations do, it really just sets up the parameters in which that type of development occurs. And so we added some text to really just clarify that it's private individuals who really develop land, and it's not really the county or one of the local cities. Zoning enforcement, once again, we didn't really need any changes for this, but it was education to let people know how, how zoning works and how that would be processed, and so we have language in there already that addressed that. Once again, we had recommendations about adding signs to some of the areas so people know that they're within the, the zoning area. A sign could even have a number to say, call the county at this number if you have questions, that's how it's done in other areas. HOA enforcement, we had a lot of people with HOAs, they were looking for the county to help sort of enforce their, their HOAs, but that's really between two, two private parties in there, so there was a lot of education about how, how HOAs work, the county does not really get involved in that, but of course, you know, the HOA could always try to point out if there was a zoning violation or, you know, file, file a complaint in some other form, but the county does not get involved in the HOA restrictions, it's between two private parties. And the collaboration between the cities and counties, as the state law sets up, if, if you're a city within the planning area, then, then your mayor is on the Planning Commission, but there's other things that we could do as, you know, as some of the other members of the Lake Tewocne Planning Commission would like to know what's going on in other cities, maybe there could be a yearly report by the mayors, what's going on in their city, so there could be some coordination. Because once we get inside those city limits, it's really the city, city zoning controlling, so there were some residents who came out to the meeting, they necessarily didn't like the city zoning, and they're asking about the county zoning, but when there's a conflict, it's really the county, I'm sorry, the city zoning, not the county zoning regulating inside the city limits. So just a little bit question about that. So, so really that, those were the major changes. The, the Lake Tewocne Planning Commission, they, they liked all those changes, they were very supportive of that, and they recommended the plan to you to be adopted, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Daniel. Any questions?
Well, I think it's well done, I appreciate Freezer Nichols for all the hard work, all of your staff, people that worked on this, I know there's a lot of time spent on it. And just, you know, the question I think that we get asked a lot is, you know, what are we doing about all the growth? And the court's been very supportive of, you know, rewriting our subdivision rules to strengthen the development, you know, the, the control of the development as it comes in. We've approved the thoroughfare plan to make sure that we reserve corridors for thoroughfares so we can get people from point A to point B and don't have to go condemn people's houses or go through the middle of a subdivision and make people have to front on a street they didn't want to be front, fronting. And, and then we're, now we're currently working on the Lake Tewocne area with the planning and zoning and trying, I don't think that planning and zoning they'd even have looked at in 25 years probably, and a lot of things have changed, so we're updating it and strengthening it, and nothing more than just trying to not control the growth, but just plan for it, to make sure it's, it makes sense, it's got some logic to it, and it, you know, we don't have a residential house next to, you know, a garbage dump or something, so, you know, that's, that's the whole purpose for it, and I think, I think we're well on our way to getting all of this accomplished with the help of Freezer Nichols, and so I'm really appreciative.
Judge, I'm sorry, I just.
Go ahead.
I have a quick question, and I second the judge's thank you to, to you for your hard work on that. About the, I just want a little elaboration on the, the density question. You all did some, made some changes after public feedback to reduce the projected number of residents, I guess, what was, what was the period of time that that covered?
The, I could go back, but we were really looking at, you know, going out to 2045, and so whether the, and we're about 12,000 people in the lake area right now, so by 2045, how fast would we grow? And it's adding 2,000 to somewhere between maybe 10,000 additional people in the lake area in the next roughly 20, 25 years.
And, and remind me again, I think you, you may have said 25%, but I may have been miss, miss, miss hearing my, I was trying to keep up with you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're, you're fine though. How much of that was what we call higher density?
Okay, yes, good question. And so I could go back a little bit to, see if I have an overall one. So in the, in the blue areas on the map is where there could be potential for, for higher density. And in those blue areas, what we did was say, you know, the only place really appropriate for the higher density would, would be in those blue areas. Now, there, there was sort of a question about like, well, that's, that's a large area, so we were trying to say, the 25% of that blue area is the max that, that you could have the higher density in, so, because we didn't have that limitation before, and the, that whole area is not going to, those, all those blue areas are not going to develop with higher density, but we, we understand that from a planning perspective, but then just to have that out there as a statement is like, well, could that happen? Well, we, we don't have language in there, so let's say it to, to calm people so they, they don't think that, that whole area would be like apartments or something.
That's helpful, because I was looking at the, the total land mass and going, that's a lot of high density, but, but what you're saying is that, that indicates the land that would, it would be appropriate for higher density, not that it will all be dedicated to higher density.
Correct, correct, because when, when we're at that planning stage, because when someone's going to come and try to rezone, like, let's say if it's zoned for, for ag right now or something like that, you know, that's what the Lake Tewocne Planning Commission will do, is really dive in and, and take a look, is it appropriate? They'll have a recommendation, they're not the final authority, the court's the final authority, they'll have a recommendation, and then you guys will also take a look to see if that makes sense. But once again, putting, putting a cap in there so it wouldn't, wouldn't go too, too high.
Perfect. Thank you, that, that helps clarify.
Yeah, and again, of course, you know, this is just a, a plan, it doesn't mean that it can't change and it won't change, it's a living document. The Tewocne planning and zoning in this court will have authority to change it at any time as things change. If we wanted to approve a zoning that doesn't meet the comprehensive plan, we can even do that, it gets done a lot. I think, I tell the story a lot, I, I served and was involved in probably four comprehensive plans in the city of Greenville, and I don't think we ever followed any of them, so. It's a good footprint, it gives, you know, the people that are coming to look to buy land know that they, what the odds are, if they can put what they want to in a certain area, and the odds are probably not good, if they're going to go try to build a commercial spot when it's low density residential, they're probably not going to get that changed, but if somebody's got a low density residential, somebody want to do a small project with a little higher density, they might get it approved. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a plan, and it gives everybody a chance to know, and I was at the December meeting, and, and a lot of the comments about the ranches and all, a lot of people said, man, I have my family farm here, I don't, I don't want anybody to develop, and I don't, I don't like this whole plan. Well, the whole plan is to protect him or that owner from somebody coming in and doing something next door that he doesn't like. So, I mean, you know, trying to educate the public that it's not trying to do anything to them, it's trying to protect them. So for those that really want to, to keep it as it is, this helps keep it as it is in some cases, so.
Judge.
Any other question?
What you said in reference to plans that you've been over with at Greenville, we looked at part of this one as thoroughfare, that was actually in a plan in 1970 down 2101.
Yeah. Things change, so.
Things change.
If no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel, thanks for everything you all done. Commissioner, I think, I'd like to go to executive session and talk about items one and, uh, five on our agenda, and then come back and take action on those, so those that are here may be waiting to get answers that we can get them, and then we'll come back and finish it, and then go back into executive session again. Daniel, that all okay?
Yes.
So by just naming those two numbers, we don't have to say what section, executive session?
That's correct.
We're just going to discuss these two topics.
That's right.
Okay. All right, commissioners, I entertain a motion to go into executive session at 11:05 to discuss action, action item one and five on our agenda of today.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we're in executive session at 11:05, and we'll try to get an answer as quick as we can, I know y'all are waiting to see what we do, so we'll get, get it done as quick as we can. Phillip's not going out there to talk, is he?
I hope not.
Are we? Not hitting, my screen's dark, probably didn't hit it.
Bring 'em back in?
Yeah, bring 'em back in. Anybody back there to go get 'em?
Brittany, go.
Brittany, get up!
Go, Brittany.
Yeah, Becky definitely has to sign. That's pretty impressive. Yeah, you can bring it in. It's basically...
I guess give him the okay, so... I don't know.
Business as always.
I don't think...
Oh, I know.
Well, that would have been my agenda.
Basically, it has to say...
All right, let's see here. We're up... Are we up?
We are up.
Okay, it's 11:50. We're back in regular session. We're going to take up action item number one. Approval of Hunt County Fire Protection Agreement contracts. Currently dealing with the Quillen Fire Department. Hey, Daniel, do you have a contract you can hand to the fire chiefs that's sitting behind you there? Couple of them right there to your left. What I think... I've tried to paraphrase best I can what the court's wanting to do is we're doing a... It's the same contract that we're giving to the others, except this was for a six-month period of time, and we've added some red line stuff that the contract basically says it, but we want to make sure it's clarified that if y'all... If volunteer fire department fails to meet certain items, we can give you a 30-day notice to terminate the contract. We're wanting to pass this subject to y'all. I want y'all to have time to look at it. You don't have to get back to us today, but we're going to vote on it. It's our position, and I'm going to encourage y'all. As I... Just so y'all know, I met with Chief Biggers this week... last week, and Mr. Martin, Quinster Martin did. And we've told him basically the same thing. We don't want to be refereeing fights. We don't want to be refereeing all these arguments. We expect the volunteer firefighters to be the... Called out whoever's closest to the problem. We expect them to be there, be toned out. That has already been corrected with the dispatch. That has already been corrected with dispatch as of last Friday, I guess it was. Chief Biggers sent a message. Is that right, chief? I didn't see you back there. That is correct. And so the closest department will be toned out. Of course, cash will go to the city of Quillen first. That's because they have a contract with Quillen. Y'all will be the second one toned out. If y'all are there, if you're not, if you don't respond, they'll tone somebody else immediately just as it currently works. We expect everybody to show up and be professionals and I think I've told both sides, I don't expect y'all to go have lunch or dinner or breakfast together. I don't expect you to hang out or anything, but we do expect you to be professional and the court doesn't like hearing all this inviting between some of the departments. So we want that to stop to help all our lives be a little simpler. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the revised contract that terminates in six months. Is it from today or from first of March, Daniel? It will be effective the first, February, be effective February 1st until six months from now. I'll make that as a motion to approve it. Subject to them approving it, of course.
So move.
Got a motion in second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. So y'all take it, review it. If you got any questions, call us. We'll get you any legal response. Y'all can get an attorney to look at it. I don't think it's pretty straightforward, I think, and we hope y'all can get enough help and get everything done. And we did tell them that we liked, Phillip and I liked the bookkeeping y'all are doing. Y'all are doing a good job in a lot of ways, but we got to correct these little problems we got and we hope we don't have to take this up again except to extend you a new contract in six months.
Your honor, then after y'all decide that you're going to sign it, if you will, take it to the fire mark?
I need to bring it back to us. You know, you can get a caller at me in my office and we'll get a time to get with you and get it signed. Did it be notarized, Daniel, that you picked it?
Yes.
Okay, so you can come to our office or do it down there and get it notarized, but we'll get you a good clean copy. We don't want to sign this one.
I was talking about something else.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That contract doesn't have to be notarized.
Okay. Can they sign it if they approve of it?
Yes.
They can just sign it and bring it to us?
Copy of the...
Take the red lines out?
Take the red lines, but I just write it down right here, right now.
Well, why don't y'all review it and then contact my, and call Jessica at my office and she'll get you a copy to sign and get back to us. Okay, I appreciate y'all coming today. Anybody, before, got any calls on the, online comments? Anybody got any comments that they'd like to say? Okay, so commissioners, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Daniel Ray and I have to be on a medical advisory call at 12 o'clock and then we'll, we'll come back into session as soon as we get off that call. And so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until approximately 12:20 or so.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned, or excuse me, we're in recess at 11:55 and we'll come back in at about 12:20.
Did you turn us off?
I'm trying to. Old people move slow.
Okay. We're back up.
We're back up. Okay, it's 11 or 12:20. We're back in regular session. We'll take up action item number eight on our regular agenda. Appointment of board members of the Department of Family and Protective Services Board. Did y'all get this in your packet?
Yes.
Board, they're recommending Fonda, Jack, Katie Holloway, Janice Harrison, and Jesse Harrison to the board. Entertained a motion for approval of these members to the board.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number nine, appointment of Board of Sexual Assault Response Team. Daniel, you need to brief us on it, or can we just vote on it?
You just vote on it.
Okay, so everybody know this was a new law that went into effect September of '21. Is to appoint, what's it called, a SART Board Sexual Assault Response Team. Our child advocacy has had one for 20 something years, doing the same thing that's required under this bill. We have a resolution here to approve the chief administrator of the Crisis Center, Holly Robinson; prosecutors, Noby Walker and Calvin Grogan; chief of the largest municipality, PD, Russells. Is that right? Still Wagner? Is he?
Yeah, he's with Greenville PD.
Okay, but it says the chief. I thought Smith was the chief.
Yeah, he's a designate me.
Oh, he's a designate me, okay.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff's Office, Buddy Oxford; sexual assault nurse, Liz Wolf; largest medical provider, Brent Freeman; behavioral health service provider, Nicole Everett; and presiding officer, Macy Burt of Child Protective Services, or yeah, Child Advocacy. So I entertain a motion for approval of this.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Full profiling report, racial profiling report for Hunt County Sheriff's Office. Entertained a motion.
Make a motion to approve the full racial profiling report for the Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's see here. Got request to construct and placement of fiber which may consist of both underground and aerial attachment to existing poles on County Road 1120, 1121, 1123, and 1124. And is County Road 2727 is now Precinct One, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, we entertain a motion for approval of action items 11 through 15.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. 16 through 30 are the next ones. Request to construct and placement of fiber which may consist of both underground and aerial attachments to existing poles on County Road 3118, 3131, 3132, 3133, 3308, 3318, 3402, 3403, 3507, 3513, 3520, 3521, 3525, 3326, and 3327.
Make the motion with the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 31 through, let's see, just 30.
31.
No, this by itself, isn't it?
Yes.
31, request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 2422 and Precinct Two.
Make a motion we approve this power distribution under County Road 2422 under usual stipulations.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 32, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 3503 slash Signal Road in Precinct Three.
Make a motion we allow this construction, normal stipulations.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 33, the request in Precinct One on naming a private drive, Toby Drive, due to 911 addressing three family structures to be using the same drive entrance. This drive is off County Road 2738 and will not be maintained by Hunt County. Property ID is 33758, 10.007 acres. Are those houses already there?
I'm sorry.
Are these houses already there?
I'm not sure, Brian. Do you know where they are? This is just notified me by 911 and I just, I don't know if they're out there or not.
You don't know if the houses are out there or not?
I don't know if they're.
Well, I guess my concern is, I mean, it's, we're saying it's, you know, it's gonna be three people, three homes there, family members, but if they're all gonna own their individual houses, they gotta, they gotta meet our platting, and we don't know if we're meeting our platting rules or not.
I think what you've got on this one, I think you've got two existing houses.
Hang on, get up here to the mic.
I'm trying to recall which one this is. I don't know for sure, but on a lot of them that I see, you'll have two existing houses that are there, and then you've got a family member who's wanting to put a third house Whether they're owning the houses independently or not, I don't know. You know, Kathy and 911 and I have spoken about this, that she gets requests all the time, weekly, if not several times a week, for people wanting to do multi-generational housing. You've got grandparents, parents, and a couple of kids all wanting to live on the same track. It's all gonna remain in grandpa's name or whatever, but.
I mean, there's mobile homes out there or something in individual name. Granddad's still owning land or something?
A lot of them are mobile homes. I haven't, I can't recall any site-built homes that I've seen that are all going on the same property. Most of them are mobile, or even tiny homes, or barn does, things like that.
Don't be happy looking into this more and answer those questions just to our satisfaction, make sure we're gonna do this.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna delay them either. Can we call Carol and can we just table it? We still got other business to do for a while if we can get an answer.
Sure.
Because we, we're gonna go into executive session again, and we gotta, still gotta wait on Jesse to get back with the form for Phillips, so we can go, go ahead and move in and keep going on our business, because we're kinda be rushed, so.
Yeah.
Can you reach out and call Carol right quick and see if you can get an answer on it, and we'll move on? Okay, we'll, we'll skip that for now. We'll come back out on action item 33 if we can get answers, so we know how we're voting. Okay, so we, it's 12:28, 12:28, and I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items.
Just one.
Item one of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're in executive session at 12:28.
Hit the button?
We're back up.
Okay. It's 11:11, we're back in regular session.
1:11.
1:11, sorry. I'm in rushed. Hey Jess, why don't you go ahead and go back to office in case they get there early, that 1:30 gets there early, thanks. Actually, I'm number five. The Hunt Regional Hospital requests county's American Rescue Plan funding. I entertain a motion.
I sustain from this voting, Your Honor.
Okay, Commissioner Martin abstaining from the vote.
I make a motion for us to allot $750,000 to the hospital.
Got a motion as second. All in favor say aye. Aye. I think it doesn't say it on the deal, American Rescue funding.
Okay, sure.
So we're approving five, which says it's requesting American Rescue funding, so.
Okay.
I think that's okay, Daniel. Okay, then we've got to go to action item 33. Request in precinct one will name in private drive Toby Drive due to non-addressing of three family structures to be used for the same driveway entrance. This drive's off County Road 2738 and will not be maintained by Hunt County. It's on ID number 33758. We have found out that gentleman owns more than one house on the property. It's not being so divided, so entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Daniel, any comments? Nobody's commenting online, and if there's no other business before the court, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion as second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 1:13.
Turns off.